Would they feed you?
Yeah, he started.
Started my kid.
Good evening, welcome to the Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, April 7th, 2015. Let's open with a pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. We'll have the, we'll call the members, Tom Young, Chair.
Mike Caprulio, Vice Chair.
Mike Frodo.
Russell Blanchett, Member.
Matt Schumaker, Member.
Missing is Jason Garette and the Selectmen's Rep, Steve Perry. Opening up the public input, if anybody from the Pub has something to say.
I just heard you were gonna be addressing the pipeline. And I was in that lovely shadow of the incineration zone, so anxious to hear what you have to say.
Okay. We'll open up the meeting with a discussion on the update on the Kinder Morgan Pipeline. Most of the information is on the NRPC's website. If you go to Hot Topics and open it up, it'll come down to the...
Struggling with my mouse. Give me just a moment here to reorient myself. So from the Nashville RPC website.
Yep.
That's our homepage, nationalrpc.org. Scroll down, under Hot Projects, Northeast Energy Direct Proposed Pipeline. And the NRPC has compiled a lot of really good information about this proposal. Including links to town webpages, including our very own with information of a more local flavor. And the town does offer a mailing list for anyone who's interested in signing up. It's hosted here from Town Hall. It's just an open forum for discussion of pipeline-related topics.
And it's also linked into the NRPC.
It is, good.
Sarah is on the work, so that she's getting all the updates for this instead of trying to send them back over to her.
That's good.
But I urge people, if they have questions, to go on there. A lot of the information can be found in there for the different towns. A lot of questions have been sent to Kinder Morgan, we are getting answers back from some of the towns, specifically Milford. And I believe a couple of the other towns are coming in too. So if you'd like to start anything on this, if you have some questions to bring around.
I'd like to get a feel of the board members on this project. Personally, I'm interested in submitting a letter to FERC citing my opposition to this project and why I believe it's a bad fit for Litchfield in particular. And I'd like to ask the board to make it an official board position that the Planning Board for the Town of Litchfield opposes the proposed Kinder Morgan Natural Gas Pipeline.
Unfortunately, I cannot commit one way or the other because I'm on the NRPC committee.
I understand. But you're also on the Planning Board and feel free to take a position as a Planning Board member or as a citizen, not just as NRPC.
Mr. Crower, do you have anything?
Well, I know this project is controversial for starters. There's a lot of stuff that... There, I think there are a lot of unknowns at this point. And this is gonna be a long process. I mean, if the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission is involved, I would assume this is gonna be going through review extensively. But like I said, I think that, I don't personally think it is a good idea for Litchfield to have this pipeline go through. Obviously, I guess the question is, what's the benefit to Litchfield? Is there a benefit? There are a lot of questions and this is going to have, this is gonna be a long process, I think. I don't know. That's my feeling.
Mike?
I'm not in favor. The fair question I would have is, and I'm not sure if this is relevant to here, but there's, are there two options with the federal government? And the federal government's only gonna put one or put their power behind one, but one goes with existing pipelines. So why would you not just use the existing pipelines you have already? It's just common sense, cost-wise. I know it's a different company, so maybe that's why. And politicians are politicians, but my personal view is if you already have existing pipelines, you can use what you have currently. And why have a need to put new ones in?
That I can speak to. The existing pipelines run up from Drake it, up through Londonderry, and continue on into Maine. They do not go across east-west. That's the main difference of them.
So they couldn't get the gas to the coastline? Does it go to the main coast?
It's up to Maine.
On the coast?
Right now, it's, right now it's going to Drake it, and then it'll be tied to the other lines that go up north and south. The other lines come up through Boston. So to go to the west, cover the western parts of Mass and New Hampshire, they'd have, they would still have to put new lines in. Mike, you have anything?
Uh, not at this time.
Okay. Steve?
The only thing I would do is caution you on saying whether you're for or against it until you know exactly every opportunity this could or could not bring. And the problem is, is that they're not clear as to what it could bring. And everybody is focused on what it could not bring. That's all I can say.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I think the thing right now, Steve, that's coming up next Monday night too, isn't it?
The Selectmen are gonna address it, yes. The letter that's gonna go to FERC.
So I think we should wait till it's that and if you and I, hopefully you and I will be at the meeting anyway, so we have a recommendation, we can make it at that time to go along with you.
I think that would take a vote of this board, if we were gonna sign on as a board to board a Selectman. I think it's premature.
Okay, yes.
Let's give the Selectmen a chance to work through their position. And then we evaluate what they've done and we sign on if it's appropriate for our board to do. That make sense to you?
Yep.
I guess the question that I would have for the Board of Selectmen is, what is the benefit to Litchfield by doing this? I don't see a benefit.
I agree.
Hi.
These are just things to bring to the Selectmen's meeting.
I can't answer for the Board of Selectmen. All I know is that on Monday it's gonna be addressed, the letter that's gonna go out to FERC. And I encourage you to attend and have your say in that.
Sounds reasonable, thank you.
Next up on our agenda is the Master Plan Goals and Objectives. I took a look at that, went back through that again, Jen, those are number one and number eight.
The chapters?
Yeah.
Okay.
A lot of it is still peremptive. It just has to be cleaned up a little bit, I think.
So let's, let's bring the, everyone who's at the table up to, up to speed. Can I, continuing the last meeting's theme of doing a little bit of a, why are we here and what do we do as a planning board? You are here, you know what the planning board does. But we started with just a planning board basics at the last meeting, covered the big picture. There's a PowerPoint that you all have in there, in your Google packet, that walks through the different roles and responsibilities of a planning board. And part of that, about midway through, addresses the master plan and what that ma, a master plan is for each community. It's, it's a guiding document, it's an advisory document for your community that compiles both data and public input that, from your community, that can help you set the tone for how the community would like to grow or develop or be in the future. There are two mandatory pieces of a master plan, and that's your vision component and your land use component. And those set the stage for all other functions that the master plan might address. Generally, the process starts with some data collection, data analysis, and that is both the numbers and the, and the public outreach side of things. You draft a community vision, go through, evaluate that, then look in a little bit closer detail at different topics. And then formulate some, some bigger picture goals and objectives. Then you go into identifying implementation actions, and then adopt your master plan, you start working on implementation, and you monitor your progress over the years. And then you get back to the top of the cycle and you say, huh, my master plan is now out of date and it's time to amend it or update it. Which is, which is where you are at, 'cause your last one was 2002, if I'm right. So it's, it's been a few years. In addition to that vision and land use section, you can have a whole suite of different topics. Some of the optional ones that you already have in place are natural resources, economic development, transportation, historic resources, housing. You can also include other things such as natural hazards, or energy, or cultural resources, or community design. There's a whole long list of optional different chapters that, that are allowed by statute. Couple of things to think about for what a master plan is versus if it isn't. It's your vision, it's a living and dynamic document, it's a tool for community growth, it's a guide for capital investment. So you've got the CIP committee that's out there. A master plan is a prerequisite to adopting a capital improvements plan. It's also a prerequisite to having zoning, subdivision, or site plan regulations. So a master plan though, it isn't those regulations. It is not binding. You cannot say to an applicant, well, the master plan says this, therefore you shall do this. It's up to you then to take that vision from your master plan and ultimately implement it through your regulatory framework. So that in a nutshell, it's kind of what your master plan is and what it does and to be thinking about as we kind of start on this, this process. What I had kind of posted for all of you, based on your discussion at the beginning of the year, was the, the idea was to start with those two mandatory sections, to start with the vision piece and start with the land use piece. And both of those were a large focus of the last couple of years of work that you did with your CPG grant. And so you had done a couple of different larger surveys via Survey Monkey that had a good response rate. You did the public input session, the, you were at Strawberry Festival a couple of years ago. And so using that all while back, you went through and did just a comparison of what is in your executive summary, which is where your current vision is housed, that's in your executive summary. Also, Chapter 1 of your current master plan, that goes through all the goals and objectives for all of the, the topic areas or chapters in, in your master plan. And then Chapter 8 of your current master plan is your land use section. So I pulled those three pieces. And back in 2012, we kind of compared those initial survey results to the vision and the, the kind of goal-like statements associated with your vision. And then also you took that a step further at that time and went through and evaluated all of the individual goals in Chapter 1, based upon their current priority. And that was looking at, did it reflect the 2012 survey results? Was it feasible and realistic? And was it something that the planning board truly could affect a change on? And then you also looked at whether it was, the action itself was ongoing, complete, or no longer applicable, trying to look at and identify those things that you could kind of cross off the to-do list as accomplished. So that was another thing that you'd, you'd done so far. And then the last piece that I threw up there was the summary document of all of the outreach and, and public information and data gathering that we had done over the CPG grant process. So you had all of that kind of thrown out there, and so then I was gonna now throw it all to you and say, what direction do you wanna go? And what do you wanna do? How do you wanna tackle this? Like Tom, you said, some of it's still relevant. So one of the things to think about is, do you take what you currently have and just, you know, scratch out little bits and pieces and update the bits, you know, the outdated information? Or do you want to do a complete overhaul and rewrite? So I thought I'd throw that out to you. It's your turn.
Suggestions?
Last time was updated, it was not, what was, I assume was it additions or edits? It wasn't a complete overhaul, was it? Just from my own knowledge, in 2002? You weren't here.
I wasn't here.
It was a lot of fanfare. I, I feel like it was a complete rewrite, but I don't remember now.
I think it was.
Yeah.
I would say it was a complete rewrite to the tune of a lot of the same.
So why did that again, I guess?
And being the fact I've been out of the loop for a little while, I keep, I've actually been reviewing these over the last few days. And the thing that I find most prevalent is, when you went and asked the town through the survey, it really lines up with what you have for a master plan from 2002. The really big discrepancy that has is transportation options. So let's get this clear. We want more transportation, we want more business, and we want a lower tax rate. We don't wanna affect forests, we don't wanna affect aquifer district, we don't wanna affect agricultural, we don't wanna take away from the residential atmosphere, and we want the small-town feel. And we wanna develop a town center. I'm looking at it thinking...
They'll fight with each other.
You can rub a stamp 2012 over 2000, oh, 2015 over 2002 and say, we updated it. Because those are the minor skews that you've gotta make in order to change it. Now, again, I haven't been here for a while, I'm only reading what's on paper. That's what I see.
Well, everyone here is just starting the conversation on this now too. So you're right up to speed with everyone.
Everybody wants a lower tax bill, everybody wants more opportunities to be able to get a job if they need one, everybody wants easier transportation if they don't have it. But nobody wants to affect the ultimate feel that Litchfield has. It's gonna be hard to make those changes without affecting the feel.
So it sounds to me like we need to maybe take a closer look at those things and start to come up with some actual ideas on how to maybe achieve some of those goals or actually identify happy mediums, because you could say those things, you can outline all those things again, but if you're not gonna come up with ideas for it, then it's just gonna be an abstract concept.
See, it's funny, when I was reading through a lot of this, I'm thinking to myself that I'm, I'm one of the guys that likes the town the way it is, that I can agree with people that the tax rate needs to get brought to a medium. But yet I want the schools to be good because my kids are in them. And, I mean, I, I'm seeing the conflicts all the way through. And I would really hate to point the direction over here, but I think a lot of the recommendations for what other towns have done is gonna come from Jen. Because that's where we're gonna have the dilemma, is that we may wanna do these things, but we may find it very difficult to bring these changes forward, maintaining what we have.
I, I happened to notice in the, in the survey, when I read it, that people did call out other towns as well, though. I mean, I think specifically Hudson, there were multiple comments on, don't become Hudson in terms of, well, I'm not just gonna say. So I mean, I think the, the town is in some, in some ways already identified what they don't wanna become. I think it would be useful to start maybe looking at other towns that may be a model for some commercial growth.
The issue that I have, and not to interrupt you, is that a lot of the towns that I feel have the small-town feel with a lot of character and business are the towns like Boe, the towns like Hollis, okay? Nice, small towns that actually have business and, and foster growth. The problem is, is they all have tax rates way higher than us. So that's almost proof as to, that's still what we would aim to be, but is that the direction we want to end up? Because it may not be the end result we were hoping for.
I think we really need to dig down into what drives their tax rates, obviously. I mean, services cost money, and so that is something that, you know, we need to factor in.
And services are imperative to come to this town at some point.
Right.
Just one point, when you say transportation, the National Bus Company, or Skowhegan Bus Company, is getting ready to approach Litchfield for that ride share bus, for medical, for the elderly, and for people that have medical appointments. So that should be coming down the pipeline, not too long a time.
But your transportation system in 3A is not gonna attract business, which some people is just fine.
Like all these ideas, the town's not off a major highway, like Boe, I mean, you have two highways right there that kind of intersect where they are. Some of these things are just feasible, we talked last year, some things just won't happen just because, it's like multifamily, just 'cause it passes, I mean, we're gonna have a thousand units coming in. You don't have, you don't have, if you don't have sewer, or if you don't have town water in certain areas, you can't do it, so. I just think it's nice to have on paper, but practically speaking, a town doesn't have that much land either. I mean, on a map, we're very small, so there's only so much that can be done. And it's just maybe positioning what we wanna have done, but it's also a realistic view that a lot of it just will never be implemented, just because, I mean, you're not gonna have city buses going down the street, you're not gonna have, I mean, you have Uber, maybe, but that's about it for transportation. I just don't see any of that changing.
So is that an opportunity that in the revision process, we can kind of...
Be more realistic?
Yeah, be more real, yeah. And hone in on those, those areas and those opportunities where there is potential to affect some sort of change. And to come up with some achievable action items out of the master plan, some ways to look at and identify, you know, what we, what you see are the needs for the community in the next, say, 10 years. One of the questions that you all had come up during the CI, not the CIP process, the impact fee process with the recreation facilities, and really having a hard time saying what that fee basis should be, because there wasn't a comprehensive plan to say, this is what the recreation needs are for our community, based on our population and based on expressed interest of our community members. And so as a result, you went with the smallest possible package of, of impact fee calculation pieces that were plugged into that formula. So I'm thinking about things like that, where there, there may be an opportunity. I knew myself, just kind of skimming through and glancing at some of the recommendations that are identified at the end of the, each chapter, I could look at and go, yeah, they've done this, and they've done this, and they've done this. And so, you know, the last page of that land use chapter, there were three major recommendations, and I'm like, done, done, and done. So in that end, there, there are some things that are now obsolete within it that would be worth kind of going through and looking at.
Because the Eiffel, Eiffel connector is one of the things, that's in.
Right.
The other bridge is...
The bridge, well...
Twenty years down the road.
Not so much. And the circumferential highway, it mentions as having been put in the 10-year plan back in 2009, and that's not even mentioned as deferred anymore.
No, it's in the 30-year plan now.
So I don't know where it is.
Well, they once took it out, now they've at least re-entered it as a possibility. That's a plus.
It's in the MTP, it's not in the 10-year plan.
But do we all agree that editing, as opposed to redoing the entire thing?
Okay.
I think that's what we're hearing, that makes more sense.
Okay, so we're taking approach of edit versus overhaul. Okay. In terms of the individual chapters themselves and some of the goals and recommendations, did you have any reactions or responses to some of what you read? I think we just, you know, we automatically just mentioned a few things that we know have definitely changed. Trying to remember which section it was in. Pages 3 through, I think, 5 of the executive summary, I really liked the section on progress. And what it did was, it laid out for each of the chapters, it gave a synopsis of what the 1991 recommendations were, and then the progress that had been made since then, and therefore what the resultant changes or new proposals were for the new master plan. I thought that was a really great way to kind of show that you're making some progress, but also show how, how priorities change and shift over time.
I agree.
Do you guys have any other things that, like, looking through the three existing chapters that you reacted to that maybe you said, oh my gosh, what on earth is that? Get rid of it? Or, or I really like something, or... Knowing the direction you wanna go, what I'll start doing is, I can start with the easy stuff, that's all the data-driven stuff, and kind of strike out and edit very easily, back, we can work on very easily plugging away at it.
I have a question about if we're going the, the edit route. So you, you said before there are multiple different sort of topics that you can address. We've addressed eight of them, or seven or eight of them. By saying we can, we're gonna edit only, does that prevent us from saying, like, adding, like, another topic to it?
No, and at this point, I think, you know, when we, I think it was like back in January, we talked about what the to-do list for the year was.
I think two, I thought.
Huh?
I think two chapters, right, within the year?
Yeah.
Executive, yeah.
It was one, we may have had another one, though, that we flagged as well, 'cause I think one is just the overall goals. Let me see, I can come back, if I can remember. On our to-do list page, we may have listed more...
Executive summary, vision, reaching goals.
Work plan, what do we say?
Future land use, existing land use, and community facilities.
Okay. Right. And that was, I think, kind of generally the order. That's actually one thing, you don't currently have future land use. You kind of sort of touch on it in the land use section, so, but that's one of the things that you did make a very large effort on during your community planning grant work, and did the future land use map through that exercise. So I think there was a lot just generated through that process that we can just kind of pick that up and drop it right into that land use chapter, so that you have a more expanded future land use piece. Community facilities, that's right, that was the, that was the other bigger chapter that I was thinking about, that we kind of flagged for later in the year after the CIP is done, to build on.
Looking at that list, are there other ones that you would recommend that we add to the eight chapters? Or, I mean, the ones that are missing?
Are missing?
When she was listing them, I think, was there one that was something along the lines of community design?
Mm-hmm, that's an option.
I mean, it did seem, and, I mean, I don't know if you felt this way, 'cause you just reviewed the survey, but it did seem like that, what, there was a big undertone to that in the survey, which I think would be useful too. the survey, which I think would be useful to sort of explore.
There's plenty that you have from, you know, either past planning efforts or the survey that could very easily be used to develop a new chapter. It wouldn't certainly not be starting from scratch. Where I left everything? You look at the one document, that's the comparison of the 2012 survey results to the 2002 master plan vision and goals. Should clarify, where I've said goals, they're not really, they're not the actual goals, they're a synopsis of the goals from the master plan that exemplify the vision statement. So, they're more like subbullets to the vision in this section. This is all pulled from that executive summary.
Oh, I'm just gonna ask that. I was just gonna ask that.
Okay, yeah, it's all pulled from the executive summary, it's just like a three-page side-by-side comparison.
Is that, was that attached to the Google site?
Yep.
There we go.
You got it.
Yep. We're talking about the one that?
Oh, no, I'm not, I think it's this one.
So, here's, I'll give you, I'm not gonna write your vision statement. I will write it based on what you tell me to write, but I will not draft a vision statement on my own for you. So, the point of this is to say, here's what you currently have, here's your input that you received, does this sound right? Do you want me to change it?
Are you asking that right now? Is that what you're asking us to address?
If you want to address that now, you can, if you want to hold on to it and think about it, really.
I personally would like to think about it a little longer.
Is it, would it be possible, as people go along and think about this, to just send you an email?
Yes.
Not to everybody, but individually, just to Jen.
Why don't, that would actually be a good way to do it, so that you're not sitting, all right, this, I said, I will not write your vision statement for you. On the other hand, it's very, very painful to sit through a meeting where people craft a vision statement, and then you get into nitpicking an individual word, and it goes on for an hour, you know. I think we've all been in those sorts of meetings, and they're not fun. So, that's a great idea, so, we've taken on this whole homework approach. As a homework assignment, if each of you just send me your individual thoughts on how the vision statement should be amended, then I can take what I get from everybody and try and put it all together, and I can flag the areas where you guys conflict with one another.
Yeah. Perfect.
That will cut it down a little.
Make it less painful.
Yeah.
All right. All right, so homework.
My red pencil.
So, let's start with just that piece, and then the document that's like the, I don't know how many pages of individual goals, let's kind of just leave that there for now, keep that in the back of our minds. I think you need to nail down kind of the big picture before we refine it.
Yeah.
So, all right.
The actual vision statement's top of the page, correct?
Yeah, so, the way...
That pretty well nails what I would expect to see.
It's pretty big picture in terms of how it's structured, you know, so that it's, yeah. I think the more important thing, and the thing you might find needs more refinement, are those, so those things that are labeled as goals in this document, which really aren't goals, they're more subbullets, those are those, how they, how that vision statement is being kind of...
All right, so we should be conducive to pipe dreams.
In...
Essentially, that's what we're trying to do here.
Yeah.
So, the vision statement, so here's the challenge with a vision statement, which is why you end up arguing one word in a vision statement, is a vision statement is usually so very big and broad. It doesn't tell you how you're gonna get from point A to point B, it just says what you want point B to be. And so, it is often very lofty.
We want a water.
But we talked about being more realistic in what we do with this, so.
But the...
Not with the statement.
Yeah, but not the...
Do with the content.
So, you may want to just tighten down your vision statement to make it more, you may want to make it more strategic, and that is an option. But generally, if you think about, like, the hierarchy of how we structure information that goes into the plan, your vision statement is that really big, broad thing, that everything else fits underneath. And then, from your vision statement, you'll have some goals, which will break down that vision statement into a little bit more detail. Those are the, okay, so, to get from point A to point B, your vision statement is point B, you know, where you want to be, say, 10 years from now, here's those big-picture goals that we have to achieve along the way. And then, you break your goals down another step further into objectives of, okay, well, while we're doing that, and while we're, you know, along that path, here are those objectives that we're going to try and achieve to get there. And then, you'll have your action items, or your strategies, or implementation items, whatever you want to call them, and those are those concrete, tangible, very realistic things that you can do, that can help you accomplish that objective goal and vision.
Probably a good idea, maybe, to start with the content section, work in there, and what we want, and what we don't want, or whatever. And then, once we've assessed that, it might be easier to create the vision.
Okay.
Wouldn't you use your vision to create content?
Well, I mean, if you know what you want and you don't want, then it makes it a lot easier to go back and say, okay, well, we know what we want, we don't want, but, once we know that, then your vision is gonna be a little bit more, I don't know, clear, maybe?
Think of it as a cycle, okay? So, you've got your public outreach, you know what people want, you know what people like, so you've got that piece of it. You also have your data. So, you've got to eventually make sure that both the data and the outreach inform that vision statement. And you're right, right now, you're working with just the outreach side of things, not necessarily the updated data piece. What I would say is that even if you start work on a vision statement now, that you make sure that at the end of the process, you return to it, so that after you've gone through that data analysis part of the process, you have that opportunity to refine it, so that it's fully informed by both outreach and data. On the other hand, it is very helpful to have that outreach part before you launch into the data and the rest of it, because that helps you focus your energy to where you know you have public support, and to where you know the community wants to go as an end goal. So, homework-wise, then, you guys are gonna mark up kind of the big picture, and I'll start to just mark up those areas and flag those pieces that need updating in the various chapters. And I'll start with what I know, and we'll fill in the blanks as we go.
And we'll filter everything into you, as we go along, so...
Yeah, just keep going.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll definitely be an iterative process.
Yeah.
So, all right.
Okay. Land use regulations.
Cruising along. My stack of paper. Okay, so, where we left off at the last meeting was that all that we needed to wrap up on the subdivision and site plan regulations were the definitions of active and substantial development and substantial completion. So, what you have now on page one, and then page five, I apologize somehow, I lost the page numbers that I had in the footer, I printed it and realized they were gone. So, pages one and five, you've got the two different sets of different definitions, depending on whether they're subdivision or site plan regulations. Generally, they're pretty darn close to the same. So, what I did is I tried to take, you guys had flagged some of the sample ones that you liked, and I took bits and pieces from each of those, smooshed them together, and then edited using language from your own regulations, to make sure that it was consistent to how it was referring to things. So, thoughts, comments, and responses.
I like how it came together.
Yep.
Captures what we're trying to do, and it makes sense when you read it.
Okay.
I was a little tripped up when I was reading the substantial completion and the subdivision and the site plan, and I'm looking for the differences, and then, there it is.
Oh.
But the first couple of sentences, I'm reading through, and I'm like, hey, wait a minute.
Well, and that was the one thing, is so much of what you have between your two sets of regulations, you work so hard to keep them consistent.
Yeah.
So, I did one set, and then refined, I did the subdivision first, then refined to add in the, what it was, was essentially, the site plan has a slightly, almost a higher standard, but simply because there's more work that happens on a site plan than a subdivision. A subdivision, they're not necessarily building anything today or tomorrow, but with the site plan, they are, so it adds in that additional component for the foundations.
Yeah.
Or certificates of occupancy, or having your buildings completed. Whereas, for the subdivision piece on substantial completion, it is not tied to, it is not tied to the number of housing units that are created, or the percentage of housing units that are created, and this is actually a piece to talk about. It's a good point. It's tied to the road construction, which, as you know, is tied to the number of, or the percentage of homes that are completed in that subdivision, but it references that substantial completion is deemed to have occurred when all roadways shown have been constructed through the base course.
Right.
So, that's not your finished course, your wearing course. So, the base course is not tied to the number of houses that go in there, and so that was one of the things, which is bear in mind.
Which makes more sense, given the economy that we've seen, it goes up and down, you don't know to expect you're gonna sell every house that you're gonna build, but we can at least hold them to put the road through and get that infrastructure in place to support the future growth.
As long as that road is in, and the lots are totally, are completely sellable, I think you're good.
All right, it seems to conform to what we discussed last night.
All right. That was the end of the edits that we were making, so subdivision, site plan, Appendix A, we wrapped up Appendix I and J, or I and K.
I and K.
I and K, those, oh, gosh.
A and K.
Yeah, A, we finished at the last meeting, I and K, we finished back in the beginning of February. So, the next steps were, if, well, actually, we still have the bylaws, but that was literally one number that changed. The next steps are, if everything looks good, to send it to council for review, because before you adopt anything, you get town council's comments and edits. You should budget time-wise, another meeting, so that if council has comments, that you have time to go through those comments and make any adjustments, and then you can send it off to a hearing to adopt. The bylaws changes, it was literally just that one number on page eight, that was changing it from 15 to 21 days.
Do we need a motion to put it to council, or is that just the chairman's recommendation? I don't remember.
The chairman's on the list of authorized people by the selectmen to contact council. They usually, I don't know, Mike was sending stuff through you or Joan before to council.
Usually helps a chairman out if the board is back in his decision.
Yes.
So, it's cleaner if it comes from the board.
I'm gonna make a motion to send the draft amendments to the subdivision and site plan regulations, Appendix A, I and K, and bylaws to town council for review.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
All right.
Six, zero, zero, passes.
Off to council, I should go.
All right. At least the next steps all depend on how fast council is, and how much he has.
I'll be answered by the end of the week.
I will?
I bet you will.
It's pretty quick, actually.
It's not that much that was changed.
Just like cleaning up.
A lot of housekeeping stuff.
Yeah.
Been pretty quick, so. Scheduling a hearing, how much?
May 7th.
Time do you want?
May 5th would, let's see...
Just trying to think logistics.
Well, May 5th wouldn't work if you're gonna talk about it, the April 21st.
Right. So, you wanna go for the second meeting in May?
Sure.
Sound good for you guys? Hearing's second meeting in May?
It's with the 19th?
Yep.
Right, okay. Okay.
It's a busy week.
Seven. All right, so, hopefully, we'll have something back that we can review on the 21st, get those revisions done, okay? If the revisions are minor, we can do them right here on the fly, and have that revised draft completed here, we can throw it on the screen, or you guys can watch me type in Google, which is always horrifying. All right.
Minutes for March 17th, everybody, yeah, just to go over them?
Yep.
Make a motion, approve the minutes of the meeting of March 17th, 2015.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Any other business? Any other business with tonight, Joan?
No.
I have one thing. The selectmen have been, it's been brought to their attention that Mr. Chavino owns the land down at Page and Cutler, it's a large parcel of land, and the vision that he has over there is to extract some sand out of it, and again, I don't know how much of this you guys are informed of, but his vision is to extract sand out of that and then turn that back over into town, over to the town in phases. What he wants to do is potentially regain the money he's already spent, and the money he's going to spend in turning that into whatever the town sees fit, ballfields, playgrounds, walking trails, preservation of the wetlands, things like that. So, what's going to happen is, is we need to form a committee, and what's being asked is that there is a member of the planning board that sits on that committee. There's also going to be a member of the conservation commission, the recreation commission, there'll be a selectman, which is myself, that's going to be present, and it's going to be a 10- to 15-year project. It's just that we want all boards represented there so that there's feedback always coming back to the boards, and the boards can always give their input as to where to go from there. So, what the selectmen are asking is that the planning board appoint somebody to be that person from this board.
Anybody have an interest in doing that?
I can do it.
Okay. Thank you, Matt.
Sure.
I don't see it being overly labor-intensive. It'll probably be a few meetings here and there, and then it may be a couple of years before anything happens, but it's really just, it's a back-and-forth relationship so that everybody's involved.
I saw the conceptual drawings on that yesterday. It's quite impressive.
Haven't even seen those.
Yeah. I had one comment for him. Where's the trout stream? I think he has everything else in there.
So, you'll let me know when they start meeting?
Definitely, it'll add you to the email chain, and, again, like I said, I think it's going to be, once this gets all set and gets started, there'll be a couple of meetings, and then it could be a timeframe in between that's who knows how long. But it's just so that all boards have a direct source back to them.
Okay.
Actually, brings up a thought. I know we've got, you've got different reps that are on different committees. Would it be worth, on the agenda items, just doing committee report outs, just, you know, two seconds of, this is what EFAC has discussed, this is what the CIP committee discussed, this is what this new committee is going to discuss, this is what the selectmen are up to, this is what the conservation commission is up to. Different ways just to kind of improve, you know, communication between the boards, that be...
Given that we're on the committees for that purpose of informing the board, probably it would make sense.
Yep.
That just says a committee report out as a standing item.
Do you have anything else? I'd like to thank everybody for joining us tonight. The next meeting will be on Tuesday, the 21st. I hope you can join us. Thank you, good night.
Motion adjourned.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries.